All right, I'd just like to call to order the retirement subcommittee meeting for Tuesday. I'm just saying it's Tuesday. It's Monday, July 27. And we're going to waive the reading or the review of the minutes and then we'll move on to number three. Tyler's going to give us a review of the investment options for the pension plan.
And just to clarify, per request, the role of this meeting is to put together sort of a draft, new investment lineup for the vendor transition. So again, we'll move forward. Obviously, I think that the finance committee has to vote on that and formally approve it, but I wanted to get this in front of this committee and make sure everyone was aware of what our recommendations would look like.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. So we'll go through the balances. Something you're probably all familiar with, a few things I'll note, you know, obviously, this is the 457 back up to right where we were toward the end of the year. The other thing I'll point out is the target date funds are only the 10-year funds as opposed to each five-year, which is typically what you see in the suite of target date funds. And as you're all familiar with, roughly 23% in the general account or the 4%. The 401A also north of what we saw at the end of the year due to the market recovery. And as the big difference here is bulk of the assets are in the target date funds because this is obviously the newer plan and most people are using this as the default, the target fund as the default. And then the Board of Ed Plan, similar to what you saw in the 457 Plan, and again, back up north of what we saw from the downswing towards the beginning of the year. A few things I'll point out. So this is the current Mass Mutual Fund menu that is available to all three plans. The only difference between the three plans is the 457 is the only one that has the access to the 4%, the general account. So this is what we call our gap analysis. A couple of things I'll point out. So obviously, the stable value option is the general account is the sort of protection of principal option. You have three fixed income vehicles. We've been, I say not forced, but required to use the BNY Mellon Bond Index Investment Option. We didn't have access to, if you remember, the platform we were on was fairly limited with respect to what we could offer, the funds we could offer. So we were limited to BNY Mellon for the indexing. So you have the BNY Mellon Bond Index. Our Western Asset was the Core, and then you had Templeton Global Bond. Global Bonds, not typically investments that we see in, offered in plans now. It's also very underutilized in the Towns Plan, so something we can discuss momentarily. You have the T-Roll Price Target Date Funds. We have the R shares here because we were limited to utilize those. We also included a balanced fund that historically sort of rolled off of the target date funds, and we'll address that over the next slide. In blue, you'll see domestic equity. So you have a mixture of active and passive investment options. Again, you can see in the indexing, we're using the BNY Mellon index options due to the limitations. And then, of course, we have both active large value and active small mid value, and then active large growth and active small mid growth. And then international, we have the Hartford International Opportunities. So an active international option. What we're missing here is, and we've had an issue before, is an index international option. So the hope is that we would be able to, through the new platform, index utilizing, or someone could asset allocate utilizing fixed income, domestic equity, and international. So the proposed, so what we did is we ran this by our internal oversight committee. Our goal was to maintain what works in the menu, minimize disruption to plan participants because obviously, if you're moving vendors or retirement vendors, we don't want to also, you know, exacerbate that by adding a lot of different investment options or reducing a lot of the investment options that are currently available. And so, and then also create efficiencies, given that we have some flexibility with the new vendor. So we would be utilizing that vantage plus stable value option, which again, paid around two and a quarter or so from a stable value standpoint. We would eliminate the Templeton Global Fund. It's something that's underutilized currently, and it's a, we've seen a sort of fundamental shift away from other plan sponsors, other fiduciaries move away from sort of specialized global bond asset class. So within the fixed income, we would have Fidelity replace the indexing and then maintain the Western Core Plus Bond Fund as the active manager. You can see the T-Roll Price Target Date Funds. We have access to the lowest share class investment options available. To give you an example of the difference in cost, the R shares are at 121 basis points, the I shares are at 47 basis points. So significant decrease in the overall cost of the target funds as well as utilizing the five years. So instead of just every 10-year, we'll be able to use the 2010, 2015, 2020, 2025, et cetera. Given that there was no utilization in the balanced fund and it was static as opposed to dynamic, given the target fund has that glide path, we felt it would be most beneficial to eliminate the balanced fund and merge that in with the target date funds, given that it's a dynamic investment option. Within that, domestic equity, maintain what you have and replace the indexing with Fidelity. Give you an example of the change in fees. So the BNY Mellon Bond Fund, excuse me, S&amp;P Index was at half a percent, so 50 basis points. We can get this Fidelity 500 index at two basis points. So a significant reduction in overall cost from an indexing standpoint. And then, you know, given that we previously broke out both mid and small, but very low utilization, we felt it would be beneficial to consolidate that to the extended market, which covers both small and mid and complements well the active funds. And then finally, in international, you know, maintain Hartford International Opportunities, but replace, or excuse me, in addition to the Hartford International, add a Fidelity Index Investment Option to get access to that indexing international mandate. So that's our first draft of what we would recommend. Again, I think it maintains a lot with what you have, but takes advantage of some of the efficiencies that we've, we would have under the new platform. I'll pause there to see if there's any questions.
Tyler, this is Kevin. Just a couple of questions. So not that much change in the investments, right? And you pointed that out. Do you plan on expanding out the offerings as time goes on? I mean, one of the reasons why we went with ICMA is because of the open platform.
Yes. So the hope is over time, we'll have more availability to different investment options that, you know, potentially, if there are discussions around the, you know, maybe say real estate or other asset classes, we would have more options. I think what you have, Kevin, is when you're, when you're changing vendors, the idea of minimizing disruption as much as you can, and then over time, building out what we can with the menu, given the flexibility we will then have.
The Fidelity U.S. Bond Index, is that similar to the Vanguard Total Bond Index?
Yep. That's correct.
The Fidelity Total Index, is that similar to like a VX U.S., which is Vanguard Total International?
That's the, it's similar to the ACWE. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I believe it's pretty similar to that Vanguard ACWE XUS.
Yeah, that's right, Tyler. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Fidelity Extended Market, is that similar to VTI?
It's similar to the Vanguard Extended Market Index.
Okay. I mean, I want, from my perspective, I'd like to see a little bit more, larger investment options as we go along. I'd like to see some type of schedule for that. Again, one of the reasons why we went to ICMA was it's an open architecture.
Yep.
And what type of education are you planning on performing or ICMA to help along with the transition for the clients?
So that's going to be a deep strategy. We had earlier meetings with them during the final stage. And again, their strategy is typically very high-touch, in-person meetings, you know, one-on-one discussions. We'll have a discussion with Laura Hancock, who would probably be the lead relationship manager on this, and how they would facilitate that in our current environment. But the hope is that it will remain high-touch. And, you know, with other clients that we've been, we have with ICMA, they've done a pretty good job with sort of one-on-one virtual meetings as well as group meetings. So that's the hope.
And Amy, how's the rollout going to take place as far as making sure that the, you know, the people that are participating in the plan are actually going to take part in the education?
So that's probably more of a question for Maria, and I can definitely get that from her. But I believe that Tyler, I'm not sure if you provided us the plan or if it was part of the presentations. I don't recall offhand. But Tyler, do you remember what the rollout was as far as the education?
Yeah. So again, this would all depend on the timeline, right? So and when you would roll out the new vendor. But typically, you'd have a month prior, some significant procedural presentations. I say procedural being, here's what's going to happen. Here's how you get access to these informations. This, here's how you gather your own personal information. Here's the mapping strategy. And again, it's very simplified mapping strategy as in an S&amp;P Index is going to an S&amp;P Index. So the education of that isn't significant. But it also gives us an opportunity to provide more insight about the benefits of the plan, why people save for the plan. And then the hope is, once you have the implementation, then you roll out the individualized sessions so that people can have a discussion on what they're currently doing. And so ICMA would roll out, roll out that. Now, again, typically, these are group meetings, you know, in a particular multiple locations, depending on where the demographics are. But again, you know, obviously, we're in flux right now. So it may be webinars, it may be recorded webinars, and maybe a lot of different things. So.
Well, they have, then they're going to have individual access to.
Yep.
Right? And so, I mean, just Amy, for reference, and I guess we can just relay this, or I can relay it to Maria, is I really like that participants have to opt out of the individualized meeting. So they literally have to say no to.
We can work on that. From a performance standpoint, again, you know, we have the previous, this is, this is the proposed menu, previous quarter's performance. You know, the only fund we still, it's the same fund you currently have is the MFS Funds on Watch for more qualitative versus quantitative reasons. So again, you're familiar with the majority of these investment options. Just again, we're getting them at a lower share class versus what was previously offered. Some slight underperformance in Eaton Vance. Again, it's more, more their overweight financials and their, their, given the market's rebound, has been more driven by cyclical, low-quality companies, areas they don't typically invest as much. But longer-term performance still outperforming the peer group. So no, no significant concerns there. And so that would be our overall recommendation, again, also including the target date funds by the fives. The target funds continue to hold up very well on net of fees. And I actually show you a fee comparison. This is a estimated current fee comparison as of the end of the quarter. You could see average fee was right around 1.11% of that 80, 80 basis, which 83 basis points going for record-keeping. We've now gotten that down to 0.54. The other thing I'll point out that we're going to, or we recommend going to, is to what's called a levelized pricing model. So previously, what you'll note, and there's a lot of numbers here, but what you, how you read this is on 36, the second line down, you have BNY Mellon Bond Index, you have the assets in there, you have the expense ratio. Then there was the separate account fee that Mass Mutual charged to a total fee of 105%. The total fee then is translated into dollars. And then you can see what's offset to record keeper costs. So there's hidden, there's 12 B1 fees, there's sub TA fees inside of the expense ratio, as well as this separate account fee to a total cost here. And what you'll note is that some people were paying very little, and some people were paying a little bit more for the record-keeping fees, a service that everyone was receiving. And so what we want to do is move to a model where everyone pays the exact same amount for record-keeping costs. It's a more equitable, it's more transparent. It's the way the industry has moved from a fairness standpoint. And we think it's just the right, the right way, the most rational way to assess the record-keeping fees. We're able to do that by lowering all the share classes so that you eliminate all the revenue sharing.
Is there something we need to do on our behalf, Tyler?
Nope. This will, this will occur through the approval of the fund menu. And given that there's no revenue sharing in those funds, you'll just have to charge the record-keeping fee outside of the funds. So again, Kevin, to your point, education will be crucial. We'll not only talk about, you know, here's a new website, here's a new call center, here's the new tools that are available to you, here's what's important about retirement, here's the fee savings, and here's the more transparent fee structure that is in line with what we're seeing from trend standpoint. We then show you the 401A, very similar story on the 401A as well as the Board of Ed Plan.
Tyler, do you know what the average rate of return people who are self-investing are getting, like 5, 10-year? Do we track that at all?
We don't. We actually, Lisa, we asked that of Mass Mutual. We haven't gotten the answer just yet.
Okay.
Annualized return over the years. You know, I can, you know, candidly, if you have, typically, are an individual, depending on where they invest, the target fund investors tend to do the best compared to people who do it their own, or do it themselves. But I can gather that data once we get it from, from Mass Mutual.
Because that kind of goes to Kevin's point about sort of how do we incentivize people through our structure to do the right thing, even if given them the option of like opting out, maybe they should, it's, do, do you ever do, if you don't tell us what you're going to do, we'll put you in the target date and then you can opt out or whatever you want?
So Lisa, you bring up a great point. We have seen a movement. So we have a mapping that's what's, a strategy that's called like to like, which means if we have a like fund, we're going to map it. If not, we're going to be, and utilize what the DOL has given fiduciaries, a qualified default. And so if we don't have a like fund, we utilize target funds. There has been a movement within the industry to re-enroll everyone when you have a change like this to target date funds. And that's something we can look at as well. So that, to your point and to Kevin's point, everyone would be, would have to take action if they didn't want to be in those target date funds. It's just, it's a more, I'd say, quote-unquote destructive. But it does, you know, I think, and in my opinion, get people on the right investment options, and it forces someone to make a decision to do something else. And they all, they'd be educated and they'd be given enough time to be able to make those changes. But, you know, we've, we've definitely seen a movement towards sort of a re, what's called a re-enrollment into target date funds based on age. Kevin, I think you just muted yourself.
That's probably a pretty good thing. Just follow-up question. Are we going to, Amy, are we going to make it mandatory that anybody new that starts, is it automatically enrolled? Do they have to opt out of it?
I don't believe that's how it's done now. When Eric goes through the paperwork, they give them the option. I think it depends on their bargaining group, but they have the option to go with a DB or a DB, a DB or a DC plan. So I think during that discussion, it's had, but nobody's automatically enrolled.
Do we, do we have that ability to have them automatically enrolled?
I guess we probably could, but I just don't know if we should, just because they do have the option, whether they want DB or DC.
Okay. I mean, I think the sound priority is to move them over to the DC plan.
So that's all I had for tonight. Again, you know, this is a little feedback, but we'll, we'll put this in front of the, I think it's a September meeting, if I'm not mistaken, Kevin, when this would go to vote.
Yep, that's correct. And that meets your timeframe?
Sorry, the timeframe for the funds or the?
The time for the transition for January 1.
Yeah. So we would be, we would need the finalized menu by that meeting, and we'll be good for a January 1 conversation.
Okay. I think then we're going to move on to the pension performance. All right. Should I say, are there any further questions for Tyler? All right, hearing none, I'll pass it over to Chris.
Thanks, Kevin, and good evening, everyone. We'll be, we'll be tidy here with your time. I know folks are busy and it's hot. The good news is, as you'll see on this page, the last fiscal quarter, the last quarter, excuse me, the fiscal year, the second calendar quarter, was about 180 degrees encountered in Q1, as you know. So going to the depths of the crisis in March, in the back half of March, to what has been a pretty amazing and strong-handed and consistent recovery across capital markets that kind of plays into July as well as we sit here coming into month end. So premised on a couple of things, right? The sheer magnitude of stimulus that central banks around the world have injected into the system, certainly pledging messaging that they intend to do more, married to all this discussion you've seen recently in the press on the fiscal stimulus, whether that's the plans in Washington that are underway now and being negotiated to extend things like the Paycheck Protection Program and other, other vehicles. The Germans and the French coordinating a pretty healthy stimulus package for the European Union. It's kind of all hands on deck here, obviously, and investors have taken that in a, in a pretty strong and emphatic manner. And certainly, it's premised, right? We're not healthcare experts, but I think it's fair to say that it's premised on that there is a vaccine or treatment coming at some point in the not-too-distant future, right? And I don't know that we can put a definitive timeline on that, but certainly, markets are operating and functioning like despite some pressures we continue to have around the country and the world, that at some point here, things will begin to settle down. And the comfort there, you see under the hood, we won't get into details tonight, we'll spend some time on it at our next meeting. When you've seen things reopen selectively, and the healthcare crisis is somewhat under control and managed, and I know those are big asks and somewhat sporadic, you have seen this green-shooting economic data, and you do see a lot of pent-up demand and recovery in some of those figures. So kind of under the hood, those things have been working in favor of investors. So you do see, here we highlight some of the month-to-date numbers, and we'll get under the hood here in a minute and get you some more kind of comparatives on the pension plan front. But risk appetite is back in play, and that permeates the domestic markets, the international markets, which have actually been leading the US equity markets for the last couple of months in the fixed income arena as well. So if we, Tyler, skip ahead there, if we could, two pages, let's see where that, so here is just the Town Plan from an allocation perspective. So $24.9 million at the end of the fiscal year. You'll remember back when you did some rebalancing on March 23, when we had that quick session and put about half of the overweight to fixed income back into equities, that the balance in the plan at the time was $20.7 million. So pretty nice recovery there. And we're, of course, working with Amy on the liquidity and the contribution front as well to keep those things on an even keel. If you skip ahead, Tyler, so no action here necessarily, same details for the Board of Ed Plan, same general relationship to the target rate, I think we're in pretty good working order. Board of Ed Asset, the end of June, 24-point, call it right, $4 million rounded, $20.1 million back in March in this plan when you did the rebalancing. And then finally, for Police, again, really the same story, right? You see there with allocations running generally aligned with target. So I think we're in pretty good working order from a positioning standpoint. And then a big recovery, over a $3 million recovery in the invested balance in the, in the plan. And really, to kind of cut to the chase here, you'll see if you can make it out up on the top of this exhibit where we just roll the three plans together, a pretty decent return for the quarter, 14% total return for the plans across Q2, and a little bit in the way of incremental return over the broad markets, which is encouraging, right? Which were up about 12.7%. So making some headway there and in a market that was somewhat more discriminating and accommodative to some of the active managers. So that's encouraging. So really, a good quarter across all three plans. I think the rosters are generally in good working order. We don't have any immediate recommendations for the committee this evening, and we'll flesh some of this out in greater detail, you know, when we next convene. But we did want to, if you pause there, Tyler, for just a minute, we did want to at least get you a couple of touchpoints for the fiscal year and for the quarter. What's encouraging to us as well is you do see from a participation standpoint, good incremental returns, particularly from the fixed income and the international equity managers, but the domestic managers held serve as well for the quarter. So, you know, certainly more encouraging, kind of outcomes more recently. So I think that is, that is it on the pension front. Let's skip ahead quickly to the OPEB Trust, then I will pause and see what questions the group may have. If you go back, could you, Tyler, just one page, near the OPEB Assets, again, really a similar story, right? About $3.5 million of recovered value since the March rebalance, $17.8 million largely aligned with target. So I don't think, again, we have any immediate concerns from an allocation perspective. And then, as you would expect, if you flip ahead, Tyler, you'll see there, right, as kind of anticipated, right? The story here is an indexed one. So 13.1% this quarter lining kind of right in with the blended benchmark. So kind of good, good quarters across the three pension plans on the OPEB Trust. I think a good working space from an allocation perspective, no immediate concerns on the manager fronts. So we didn't want to be quick to the task here, but let me pause there and see what questions that the committee may have. And of course, we'll get you more details and collateral as the more, as the big quarterly book rolls off, the presses here, which is kind of ongoing as we speak. Again, this was just intended to give you a touchpoint midsummer here and get you a little bit of color on the second quarter.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris?
People okay? Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate the update. Are there any other questions for Tyler or for Chris before we hear a motion? So it sounds like what, what we have to do, Amy, is we have to, do we have to make a formal recommendation to accept the investments to move on to the Board of Finance?
All right. Okay. Yeah. So at your next meeting, you guys will all make a formal recommendation at your September 2 meeting, and then that will go to the September Board of Finance meeting, and then Tyler can take that back and get them going with ICMA.
Okay. And then what's the outside date that we have to get this approved? So if there's additional questions from Board of Finance, what's the outside date that we have to get this approved?
With respect to the timeline for January 1, you know, typically, it's probably around With respect to the timeline for January 1, you know, typically, it's probably around mid-September would be the, excuse me, that's, I think if they have all the other paperwork, you probably were, are good with 75 days. So yeah, it takes your, sort of, October 1, I think you'd be good with. So it gives you, I think it's early September is the next meeting, so it gives about a month to get that in and confirm the funds.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Without anything further, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? I heard a second, so all in favor. Thanks a lot, you guys, we appreciate everything.